Work meeting to order, Newbury County Council. First item is to review a proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Presentation and discussion of proposal capital projects fund balance. Mr. Shagger, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. Good afternoon. Appreciate you all coming in and letting us get a jump start on the budget process. I think before we get into the capital project fund, and I'd like to start off just kind of showing you the 100,000-foot level view of the budget, which is the all-fund summary, I just want to thank all of county staff and their involvement in the process. I mean Debbie Cromer, Karen Bremer, of course, they did a tremendous amount of work, all of our department heads, of course, we have the sheriff here. Andrew also handled putting together some budget requests. They did an exceptional job with their requests. Eric did a great job of setting this up on the network so that we can have this system where, you know, our department heads can access their departmental budgets and, you know, we're able to work collaboratively on it. So, you know, the whole process, I think, went really well. So, and appreciate you all again, you know, letting us get a jump start by going over the capital funding this afternoon. Let me start, though, with the all-fund summary. This just really, it shows you all of the funds in the county's proposed budget for next year. And, you know, a fund is like a discreet standalone fiscal entity, which means it has its own revenues and expenditures. And anytime you move money from one fund to another, the fund that you're moving the money from, it's booked as an expenditure there. And then the revenue going to the receiving fund is booked as revenue, or the transfer, rather, is booked as revenue. And then within those funds, everything is self-balancing. I mean, if expenditures exceed revenues, then you're using fund balance. And, you know, another way to say that in this, in this case, would be using cash on hand. If your revenues exceed expenditures, well, you're contributing to fund balance. So what you see before you is a proposed $94,816,000 and change budget. You'll notice that that is in this column, the Administrator Recommended Budget. And just kind of moving from left to right, you see the account codes. So general funds, the 10 fund. Our special revenue funds, which we have 13 of, are the 20 funds. They're all separate fiscal entities. The debt service fund is the 30 fund, and then the capital projects fund is the 70 fund. Of course, that's, you know, the bulk of that money is CPST, but we've got other things in there that are proposed, too. And then just working from left to right, you'll see you start with fiscal year 23-24 actuals, the current budget, which is FY 24-25, any adjustments that were made, and what that adjusted budget looks like. You see my cursor going over that column in the middle. Our year-to-date expenditures this year, what we project for expenditures in January through June, which creates a year-end total that you can compare against the adjusted budget here. Here's your year-end totals. What the department heads requested, and then what we're recommending to you and administration for next year's budget. So that's kind of, and then you can see what the difference is between what we're recommending and the adjusted budget for the current year. And that's in that final right-hand column. So that's really what that spreadsheet shows. And so you see a $39.9 million general fund budget that's proposed. You see our 13 special revenue funds, if you follow that cursor down, to a subtotal of $4.6 million in special revenue fund expenditure requests. You can see that we're proposing an $810,000 debt service fund budget. Then the capital project fund, which we'll talk about today, is proposed at $50.7 million. Again, the bulk of that is the capital project sales tax, the CPST. And then anytime you're presenting an all-fund summary, you've got to back the transfers out, or else you're double counting money. And so our transfers, you can see, are proposed a total of 1.283 million. And that gives us, when you back that out of the subtotals above, it gives us a $94.8 million proposed budget for FY 25-26. And here's a look at those transfers, just so you see those, what we're backing out. You can see 1.2 million going from general fund to community services, which is where we have the expenditures for Piedmont Tech, the Newbury County Library, and Newbury Disabilities and Special Needs. You'll see a smaller transfer to the airport fund, where we're providing revenue basically to match FAA funding sources to complete projects at the airport. And those projects are accomplished within the airport fund. And then you'll see transfers from the state accommodations tax fund, which is the state 2% tax on hotels, to general fund. And that totals $30,317, or it's proposed to total that. So those are what those transfers are, going back to the first page in red, that you're backing out, so you don't double count them. Okay, the capital project fund budget, that's what we were here this evening to talk about. And again, going down here where the arrow is, you can see in that Administrator Recommended column that the total capital fund expenditures are proposed at $50.7 million. You'll notice, like I mentioned, working our way up, that 44.1 million of that is the capital project sales tax projects. We've got a dozen of those. And I'll tell you, the approach we took here is that you've got the established funding levels to the project, which, you know, accounted for inflationary impacts, too, on the projects. You know, we worked through that process, I believe, in the fall to adjust those totals. Then we have year-to-date expenditures, and in some cases, some prior-year expenditures here. And so those have been backed out of the total approved funding for each project, and what's left is appropriated here. Now, we will probably have January to June expenditures, and you'll see there are none proposed there, because we just want to make sure that there's enough appropriations in '25-'26 to complete the projects. We can adjust those totals downward to account for any January to June expenditures, which we would do, because obviously, we can't over, legally, we can't overspend the projects. So just wanted you to know it was kind of a conservative approach, just to make sure that there's enough revenue there to complete the projects. And the reality is, some of them are going to extend beyond '25-'26. And, you know, you'll have some carryover, not all of them, but some of them will, and they'll have to, a portion of those projects will have to be budgeted in '26-'27.
Jeff, could you give us a timeframe on, or at least a status update on these projects? Or are you planning on doing that already?
You know, yeah, I can absolutely do that.
I think it'd be good for everybody to hear where we are on all these projects. There's a lot of questions about what's going on with them.
Sure, yeah. Do you want me to do that now, or continue?
If the chair doesn't mind, I would like that.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll just work down the list. You can see the largest project dollar-wise is the detention center, and it's the first one listed, and my cursor's over it right now. Where that project stands is that it is designed, Department of Corrections has signed off on the project. The thing that we are working through right now is what formerly was DEHEC, now it's Department of Environmental Services. There are monitoring wells, not only on the site, on the grounds of detention center, but where we're proposing to put the new dormitory. You know, this is having to be, and I don't mean it in a negative sense, but shoehorned onto an existing site, and there are monitoring wells there. The wells are there because of a past release of petroleum from underground storage tanks at the gas station down the road. And DES has to approve the relocation of those monitoring wells, and that's where that stands. It's ready to bid. It's ready to go, and we'll just continue to push to get the relocation of those wells approved. So that's where that one stands. The public safety complex, we've run into some issues accomplishing that project within the budget. And so what we've decided to do, instead of incurring more expense redesigning the project, which quite frankly, would more than likely result in the removal of bays, we've decided to hit the pause button to see where some of our more rapidly moving projects come in when they did, because we're working on estimates right now, and we have reason to suspect, particularly with three projects, that they will come in under budget. And then a decision can be made, do we want to adjust the scope of the public safety project, or do we want to reallocate resources and complete the project as it was originally proposed? And it just seemed, you know, I know we want to move quickly, and I know we want to get it built, but in the long run, I think we could end up with a better project, and we can also cut back on fees with the architect in particular, if we just kind of slow it down and just see how those other projects come in on bid day. And then we'll know what we're working with. The next project is the courthouse IT project, and it's been underway. You know, we've got contractors that have been working. Eric has been managing that project and has ordered most of the hardware that was needed. You know, there's switchgear and routers and racks. The main part of the project that had to be contracted out was the cabling, and you know, you're working within a building that was built in 1909. And so there's some tricks to kind of pulling all those cables, but that's underway. And then there are some security upgrades, too, that we'll be capable of making with door locks, you know, a card system, and cameras. And the beauty of it is that it can, it can serve as like a foundation or the backbone of a countywide system. So we'll have the ability in the future, because it will scale for us to do that, and basically hang more cameras and more door locks off of this system. So I think we're really going to be able to capitalize on it. The museum roof, we had an architect come in. You know, this was a project that was not included in the scope of the architect who's doing five of the projects, DP3, or JLA, which they're doing the amphitheater in Palm Area, so they've got two projects. Because, you know, we wanted to, we thought there was an ability to avoid using an architect for the project potentially, so we just were kind of careful, trying to avoid incurring unnecessary fees. We decided, though, to have JLA, since they only had two of the projects that made sense, and they've got past experience working with roofs, like the roof on that. You know, it used to be the old post office, and it's got the barrel vault tile, terracotta tiles. They've worked with that in the past to evaluate the roof for us. Originally, the project proposed to replace the roof and at least components of the heating and air system. Having it evaluated, though, it looks like that a full heating and air system replacement will not be necessary. It's more of an issue of moving the air and how quickly the space is cooled, and that just deals with humidity. Because you've got a large, for lack of a better term, plenum that's like the old attic space, and I understand maybe like the postmaster used to sit up like on the third level, like in a crow's nest up there? So we just need to get the air moving a little bit better up there. The other thing is that JLA, in evaluating the roof, said the last thing we want to do is take those roof tiles off. That is a roof that's over 100 years old, and if you take those tiles off, it will spring, and we'll have all kinds of problems. So what they're recommending, the architect, is that we just replace the tiles that are damaged. One of the other issues we have is there's a flat roof on the very top with a drain, and I think there used to be a flagpole up there in, when it was post office, you could fly the flag up there. Then you've got interior gutters more down around the soffits, you know, of course, they're on the roof, but you know, sort of above the soffits. Well, what we're doing right now, and what this building was designed to do, is you're taking water from the outside, through the building, and then back out the building. It's not the best way to handle rainwater. It's a beautiful building.
Not the way I would do it.
Yeah. So what we're looking at is can we eliminate the internal gutters and downspouts? And the downspouts are like cast iron, and if you ever, you've probably dealt with it, but definitely like with a water system with cast iron pipe, they get, it's like, they call it, some people call it tubercula. It gets to a point where there's hardly any diameter in there that can flow water, and we sort of have that problem. Plus, we're kind of tracing where it goes into the, into the stormwater system, too, and there's some issues there as well. We found that it used to have two outfalls, now it has one, and it's trying to pipe all that water through one. The idea is to sheet the water across that by adding tile in, and they'll match it, you know, and then putting copper gutters on. And copper gutters would have been, you know, it's period sensitive. You know, back in the 20s, you would have had copper gutters. On the top, we're trying to go with like a low rise to shed the water and eliminate that roof drain that's basically on the center of the building, up in that flat area. And so this is one of the projects that we think we can accomplish significantly under budget. We'll see, but that's, that's the goal, and, you know, we should have something that functions a little better in terms of moving that water, too. The recreation complex, you know, that's the city of Newbury's project, and they've begun incurring expenses and will be seeking reimbursement, and we just released those funds to them. Karen handles all that processing and reviews their requests to make sure, you know, that everything is compliant in terms of scope of work and CPST requirements. Prosperity Park improvements, that's, that's moving pretty well. An order has been placed for playground equipment. They've got two proposed playgrounds. It's a significant amount of equipment. I think they're going to get a good product. You know, these are modular systems. They were, we were capable of buying those off a state contract, and of course, the town, you know, decided what they wanted. The parks are designed, the town square is about halfway through design. And they'll, and then, of course, they'll have to develop the construction documents, and then it will bid. So it's, it's got a little ways, that's some additional scope they added, but can be accomplished within the budget for the project, and it will have to be because of the requirements of the sales tax. So that's where that one stands. Whitmire is, I believe, our project that's closest to being bid, the town gym, and, you know, you'll see that one bid this spring. So it's, it's moving pretty well. And of course, you know, we've got projects underway that's supported either directly or indirectly, two community development block grants in that area, and then Scott Sawyer and our staff is working with the school district and the town to secure funding to redo the tennis courts, which are right outside of the city gym. So I think we'll end up with the beginnings of a pretty nice scope of rehab and revitalization in downtown Whitmire. We're trying to capitalize on this investment and working with the town, of course, not, you know, letting them take a lead in that in terms of visioning it, where it'll have a major impact on their downtown and the community. Palm Area School is the same. It is very close to bidding. We expect Whitmire and Palm Area to be the first two projects to bid, and we, there could potentially be some savings with both of those projects. Little Mountain Reunion, they've got some electrical work that they are about to undertake that needs to be done to support Little Mountain Reunion Festival, and then we're timing the bid of that project so that construction does not begin until after the reunion. right balance in terms of the level of finish in the building, the number of restrooms in the building, you know, the number of restrooms that would be open to the public when there's not a performance, you're going to have to section that off. The amenities that are there at the stage for the performers, so it's just, you know, working through that process with the city, the architects, and also the opera house to get that done. And then with Gallman Place, Gallman is moving in terms, the initial scope with it is the removal of some environmental materials in the building. You know, there is lead paint, there's some asbestos, and then being in a position to actually bid the full scope of the project. And so the environmental remediation will be beginning shortly, and they have a funding source for that as well. So in the interest of getting that moving, so that we can move forward with the actual renovations, that will be step one. Renovations are step two. So that's kind of, that's where those projects stand. So the next section, I'm just kind of moving from the bottom up here. You see the 44.1 million for the 2022 CPST. The 2016 CPST, the only purpose of really having that on there is just to show you those last two projects. You know, the watering points, which are just basically underground tanks that can hold water that the fire trucks can remove water from. That project and the Whitmire Town Hall, you know, there were structural issues with the town hall that was renovated during the 2016 project. And the best way to deal with the space behind the building that was slated for renovations was to demolish it and build a new building. And so there's a pre-engineered metal building that's been built, there's not only base space, but there's like a break room in there, and we're actually in the process right now of just outfitting the break area. You know, there's some appliances that they need for a table, you know. But those projects will be complete, or we're projecting they'll be complete by the end of this fiscal year. So it was just more just letting you know that those are done. And there was activity in the current year, so we felt like that should be reflected on the spreadsheets. The last section, which is, you know, if you're going from down to up, backwards, the last section is capital projects, and you can see that 6.6 million in change of projects is proposed. And this is probably the area we would spend the most time on. And you'll see that we have seven projects here, six of which are proposed to be active projects. One is something that was proposed in the current year, and you know, we pivoted on this, and I'll go over that in a second. And so we won't have any activity associated with it next year. So it's really six active projects. So I'm going to get into those. Okay, so I think it would be better, instead of starting with the revenue, to just kind of back up to the revenue. Because what you'll see, because it's a fund, you've got revenues that are being presented for those three divisions in one presentation, which could be a little confusing. So let's go by revenue and go to capital projects, which would be your fourth or fifth page. Hang on, let me count pages. One, two, three, four. It's your fourth page. Okay. So what you see here are the six projects I mentioned. Those projects are, and I'm in the bottom, under expenditures. And it should say capital projects at the top in the middle, and then under that expenditure request. And then you've got the same columns, you know, shown from left to right. So if you go down to the bottom, under expenditures, you'll see the six projects I mentioned, plus the one proposed in this year that we are not moving forward with. And this is the summary of those capital projects. So the first one is the grant, is the grant that council authorized us to pursue to develop a plan for safety improvements to the county's public road system. This is the Safe Streets For All grant. It is a federal grant available through the U.S. Department of Transportation that we were able to get. The grant's 240,000. You'll see that there's a 20% match, which gives us a $300,000 project. And we're proposing to use fund balance within the capital project fund, not the general fund. Cash on hand within the capital project fund to match that grant. So we're basically spending 60,000 to leverage 240,000. And the end goal here is not the plan. You need the plan to then apply for money to implement the safety upgrades. So this is step one, would be to get the plan done, and then we would apply for implementation money from the U.S. Department of Transportation to implement these. And so that could be intersection improvements, it could be rumble strips, the reflectors, signage, there are a number of things you can do with the funding source. Some of them are inexpensive, some of them are expensive. But the plan will help us identify those, and council will have opportunity to be involved in that process, and then we'll try to get that moving. Okay. So the next project is Mossens Way roadway. And you know, this is the project to establish a loop road within the Newberry County Industrial Park on 219. You know, we've talked a lot about this project, and it is underway. We have gone through eminent domain to obtain the right of way that we need. You know, Mossens Way right now is the entrance into the industrial park. It's fairly straight. You get to the back where Samsung is, and then it doglegs to the right. It goes to the back of Kamatsu and the front side of the new buildings with Samsung, where Switzer Maldy used to be. The concept is to take it from that point to the property line there at the back of Kamatsu, in that cleared land, which used to be the old Cleveland track, and then down that property line back to 219. And what it will enable is two points of ingress and egress in the park. It also better positions us to resurface the existing Mossens Way. The project will be very far along by July 1st, but not knowing exactly how far along, you can see that the full expenditures for the project, less what we've spent to date, is what's requested for next year. And we'll just adjust the totals downward to reflect the activity that occurs between now and the end of the fiscal year. But we have gone, like I said, we've gone through, it was a friendly eminent domain procedure. It was just the most efficient thing to do when you're dealing with two companies that are not headquartered in the United States. I mean, they have a lot of facilities and other priorities, and you know, that road is not, you know, not one of, you know, it's not top of their list. So we've worked with the three property owners, and that was the most expedient way to handle the project. So you can see we're proposing $9.92 million worth of expenditures next year, understanding that it won't end up being that much, because we will have activity between now and the end of the year. Newberry Industrial Park South is the next project listed there. And you see that projected year-end expenditures this year are 11,000, but we're asking you for 20,000. And that's because this year is the final one-year extension of the option-to-purchase agreement that we have with the landowner. And, you know, we're going to need to renegotiate that agreement unless that's something the council decides, and we've got a little bit of time on this, but something that y'all decide you don't want to do. But if you do, just trying to be conservative so that, you know, we have the resources we need to maintain that. And this would be that industrial site that is located on Highway 34 bypass or Dixie Drive. So the next project is MCCP 2773 project. And you'll see, if you go over to 2425, you'll see that 170,000, and it's on the same page, but the column FY 2425 budget, you can see that council established 170,000 budget for that project, and it was a new entrance sign for Phase 2 of the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. And you know, that project was going to be funded with utility tax credit revenue from the Newberry Electric Cooperative. But then we had an opportunity to apply for a grant from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority to extend water and sewer lines in the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park 1, the original park across the road. That, quite frankly, is a better opportunity for us, because that's creating product, that's opening sites up for development. And so we talked, of course, with y'all, we talked with Newberry Electric to make sure they were comfortable with that 170,000 being used for the water and sewer project, which they were. They actually, I don't think Keith would mind me saying he prefers that. We applied for the grant, and we got the grant. And so what you see here is there is no MCCP 2 project proposed next year. It'd be wonderful to do the sign, but we've got our resources going to these other projects that are developing product, and that's why it's not in there. As long as y'all are comfortable with that, we'll tackle the sign later, you know, when that's something that we have a funding source for, as opposed to using county general fund money.
Better use of funds.
I think, yeah, I think so. I think so. The next project is the one I just mentioned. It's the water and wastewater upgrades in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park 1, the original park, you know, across from the country club. And you'll see there's 997,000 worth of expenditures. And this is Phase 3B of the water and sewer and infrastructure development of the park. You know, if Mid-Carolina Commerce Park was an apple, we're just having to take multiple bites of the apple. We don't have the resources to fully develop that park at one time. And so what we try to do is strategically to use grants, and what county money goes in to these projects specifically to leverage those grants, and just kind of do it one project at a time. The proverbial elephant. And you'll see, so that project's 997,000, or at least is proposed to total that. The next project is the Whitmire Sidewalk Project. You know, this has been ongoing. This is the sidewalk, which would be new along Gary Street and Supertown Road. We expect there to be progress on this project between now and June 30th. But again, being conservative, we just took everything that's been spent to date, subtracted it from the projected expenditures for the project and the funding sources we have, and asked you if you would appropriate all of that next year, understanding that we should not need all of that, because we should have construction before June 30th. But I will tell you, we've run into a little right-of-way issue. The sidewalk will be built within the right-of-way, that's not the issue. We need temporary construction easements from two property owners, one of which has already provided it, for the back slope of the sidewalks, so that it is fully compliant with ADA, and we don't have any kind of liability exposures there. And we've run into a little bit of a hitch with this temporary easement that we need. We're working through that process with the property owner. Otherwise, you know, we'd be bidding the project, and it's ready to be bid. And it should be something that, you know, this is, knock on wood, would progress rapidly once it's bid and the contractor was mobilized. So, you know, we'll just continue to push to try to get that easement that we need and move forward. And that is a community development block grant-funded project. The next one, that's the last line on that spreadsheet at the bottom, is the Whitmire Streetscape Project. You know, I mentioned that earlier when we were talking about the city gym, because this one is really kind of, how I would describe it, it's dealing with the environment around the gym. It's like, hey, how can we take this investment in sales tax money in the gym, do a companion project with it, and use it as a catalyst to revitalize or assist the town with revitalizing downtown Whitmire? And we've got some businesses that have made recent investments there, which I understand is going well. And that's really what you do when you're dealing with a downtown, is you just create an environment that is attractive and conducive to investment, and then you let the private sector come in and make investment, and create body heat downtown and opportunities for business and residents. And that's the idea behind this. And this is a CD, a community development block grant. This is a grant y'all approved us to go after. The grant with Whitmire Sidewalk's 475,000, this one is 750,000. So it's a pretty good-sized investment that's being made in downtown Whitmire. Let me back up, show you the funding sources for these projects. You can see use of fund balance here at 112, 243. Again, this is not general fund fund balance, this is cash on hand in the capital project fund. And I'll tell you, by not proposing a budget for interest earnings, we have a good opportunity to maybe not zero out the use of fund balance, but to drastically reduce the use of fund balance during the year with unbudgeted interest income. Because the equity within the capital project fund is invested right now in the local government investment pool in the state treasurer's office. So any interest earnings we have, and you know, just if you think about it, last year y'all transferred $2 million to the capital project fund. I mean, that $2 million at current rates would generate about, if you didn't touch it for a year, would generate between 90, 95,000, just that. So, and that would, that's unrestricted interest earnings. You know, the CPST interest earnings are restricted. So the use of fund balance in the end will not be that. And all that is being used to do is to provide basically little gap funding in several of these projects. The Whitmire Sidewalk, yeah, the Whitmire Sidewalk Project has a small amount of fund balance proposed to be used. The Whitmire Streetscape Project does, and that was really funding contingency on both of those. Making sure that there was enough there to implement the projects, and we needed a little bit of gap money. The options to purchase for Newberry South Industrial Park, that is a, that's a proposed $20,000 use of cash on hand. So the use of fund balance is small, and there's similarly a small amount for the water and sewer project in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park, again, really associated with contingency. So it may not be spent. If it's spent, it's a good chance that it could almost entirely be offset by unbudgeted interest earnings. So it's more of a balancing trick. There's a proposed $2 million appropriation from the South Carolina Coordinating Council for Economic Development, it's already been secured, that's for the Mossens Way project. And it is based on Samsung exceeding the number of jobs created and the amount that they invested in that plan. They exceeded their promises to Department of Commerce and so-comerce that they would provide $2 million in funding for the road. There's a $600,000 grant from, it's a site enhancement grant from the Department of Commerce, and that's something we had to compete to get. And they awarded it, and that also is for the road project, the Mossens Way project. We already have that in hand. There is $566,000 in utility tax credits, and that's utility tax credits over four years. Because the Electric Cooperative had committed funding for two years towards Mossens Way that we were able to accumulate. And then there's a two-year commitment that they are making to fund the match for the water and sewer upgrades in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. So that's what that 566 is. There is a $475,000 community development block grant for the sidewalk project on Gary Street and Supertown Road. There's a $750,000 grant for the downtown Streetscape Project in Whitmire. That's a CDBG. There's the $240,000 Safe Streets For All grant for the plant, so that we can get implementation money in the future for safety upgrades to our roads. There is the $678,750 grant from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority, that's for the water and sewer in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. And then you'll see 1.186 million in C funds from the Newberry County Transportation Committee, and that is for the Mossens Way project. We also asked and received C funds for the Whitmire Sidewalk Project and the Whitmire Streetscape Project. They agreed to provide matching funds for those three projects, you know, which we really, really appreciate them doing. And that's just, they're just totaled there in one revenue line item. And so if you kind of look at it project by project, like I mentioned, so, hang on, let me tell you the page number, flip to. One, two, three, four, five, six. Page seven. That is the Safe Streets For All project. And again, it's a 300, it's on the screen. It's a $300,000 project, $60,000 use of fund balance. That was the other, I think I neglected to mention it, that's part of that use of fund balance. Again, could probably wipe out most, maybe not all, but most of it with interest earnings that are not budgeted. And then the $240,000 planning grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and that would be a planning project. We would hire a consultant for it, and we'd go through an RFP process to select the consultant. The next page is the Newberry Industrial Park South project. And again, this is the options for that industrial site on Dixie Drive. And just trying to be conservative, because we'll need to sit down, assuming y'all want to renew that agreement and keep it in place, which would be good, because, you know, we were able to get Department of Commerce money to certify that site. There's a fair amount of work that we There's a fair amount of work that went into that, in terms of surveys and assessments. We will need to sit down with the property owner and negotiate that agreement, and get some direction from y'all on the front end and the back end of that negotiation. The next page is the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park 2 Project. That was the entrance sign. It was budgeted this year. We pivoted to water and sewer and did not do it. We moved the money from that department to the Water and Sewer Project Department, and you see nothing proposed for next year. We'll tackle the sign in the future, as long as you all are okay with that. The next page is a detail on the water and sewer project in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. It's the Phase 3B, and you'll see there that, you know, you've got $92,000 in engineering remaining. You've got $822,175 in projected construction. And then you've got $82,825 in contingency budgeted. And then we just put the revenue sources on these pages, just so you could see, okay, well, how much of, you know, the total budget for utility tax credits is actually going to this project? And you see that in the revenue section at the top. All right, next project, Whitmire Sidewalk Project. You can see the 531 broken down in engineering and design. That would be the remainder of that. And then the full cost of construction, contingency, and project management. And again, you know, there's a conservative element to this. Hopefully those expenses don't materialize, and if they do, hopefully we don't have to use fund balance, we use interest earnings to pay for them. The next page is the Streetscape Project. And again, it looks like the other one. It's just different numbers. It's engineering, construction, contingency, and project management. And we anticipate that all of those expenditures will be July 1 or later. And we should be prepared very shortly to make a recommendation to y'all on the award of a contract to an engineer for the project. So we've already done that solicitation, so we can get it going. These CDBGs, what's really important with these is you've got a 24-month grant period. And usually the awards are made in December. You get a letter, if you got the grant, you get a letter from the Governor's Office. If you don't get the grant, you get a letter from Department of Commerce. You don't even have to open it, you know what it is. But you've got 24 months to get the project done, and it's really important, if you can, to avoid extensions, because I would look at this thing like a credit card. We probably should try to have a CDBG open at all times. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, the only area that we have in Newberry County that qualifies for one is Whitmire, because it is based on income levels. And so, you know, but if we can get a grant and we can help the Whitmire community and do it, I know you all feel this way, we should figure out a way to do that.
If you can get free money, make Whitmire shine.
And they're doing it too, and so we can kind of tag-team this thing, you know? And then they come off the ropes and get one and do a project, and we do the same. That's kind of the premise behind it. And again, this will hopefully improve the look and function of downtown Whitmire. The next page just shows you those 2016 CPST projects, and you know, we project those to be done by June 30th. And so no expenditures are proposed next year, but we, you know, we wanted you to see that. And then you get into all of the project budgets for the CPST projects, and I'd be glad to go through them, but you know, it's basically, you've got them in front of you, and it's a mix of remaining design costs, which would be your architectural and engineering services, project management, you know, we have Clayton Construction that is managing these projects for us, and then construction. Is there any, any questions or anything that, like concerns you could see right off the bat you want us to address? It's fairly straightforward, it's just, it's a lot of money.
Any questions, concerns?
I would just say, what an incredible overview and the grasp that staff has on all of these projects is just kind of mind-boggling that you could be juggling that many proverbial chainsaws. And so what a blessing to have a staff that's able to do that. So hats off to all of our staff for a job well done and a great capital projects update.
It's laid out.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, anybody can understand, I can understand it, so that means anybody can understand it. And so, and I would say, I don't speak for the rest of the council, but I think that the lease option on the land is a much better deal for the citizens of Newberry County in the short term. And if we need it, we've got that option without making incredible capital investments at the taxpayer expense when we might not need it. So I, for one, think that's a wise way to do business. That may not mean anything else, but I think it's a good way to handle it.
Yep. Thank you.
Totally agree. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank the staff, everyone involved, they did a great job.
Appreciate the hard work. Can the rest of it be this smooth?
I hope so.
If you did your homework, it will be. You did excellent job on that part. All right, so no, any comments or requests from council?
Appreciate the time and work you put into it, that you presented clearly to us.
Appreciate your hard work to you, Jeff, and the staff that helped you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it.
Very clear and concise. Any more comments? Not your turn. Have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion, I second. Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Reed, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
I got a yes, all right.
Yes.
Unanimous. We are adjourned.[1010.12]
Good afternoon. It is six o'clock and I'd like to call our county council meeting to order with the invitation and pledge of allegiance by the Honorable Johnny Mack.
May we all bow our heads. Now God will come again. Our head hung locked to our shoulders as it be in our midst. And God creating all of a clean heart and the right spirit will make good decisions for county council. And we will stand among these instead of real men of God. They will stand in man that's Christian Newberry County and tell them we're God's children. And sweet now Jesus Christ, may we all say together amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody come out for county business today. Glad y'all are here. Y'all are important to us. We're here for y'all. So first item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. We'll take all three of these as one if that's okay. It's Newberry County Council Work Session, March 5th, 2025. Newberry County Council Meeting, March 5th, 2025. Newberry County Economic Development Meeting, March 10th, 2025. I have a motion to accept. Motion by Councilman Smith. Second, Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Reader?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Councilman Sees, second by Mr. Curry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Third is recognition. It's the best time of our meeting. And for that, I will turn it over to our fine administrator, Mr. Shuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Good evening, everybody. This is a recognition we do at our second meeting of every month. And it's a chance for us to recognize our employees with their milestones in their service with the county. We do it in five-year increments. And so we have our share of five-year anniversaries that we celebrate, but we recently had fifty year in one point, happy days. And we have our share of thirties, too. So it's just fun to get an opportunity just to highlight those employees because we not only give them a certificate, but we talk a little bit about what they need to do in Newberry County and what they do. And so we have two recognitions this afternoon. And it's a little unusual, but both of those individuals are not here for different reasons. The first recognition is Jesse Long. I don't know if any of you know Jesse, but Jesse runs our Parks and Recreation Programs. She's been with the county now for five years. And the reason that Jesse is not here this evening is because she's running multiple practices this evening and getting out uniforms tonight. And she said, there's just no way I could be here. So we did our photo op earlier, Andrew and Jesse and I. And so we'll have that on social media. But I'll just tell you, I've just been very impressed with the work Jesse does. I've had a chance now. Literally, it's been two years and a week that I've been on the job here at the county. And she's a very capable person. In fact, she's capable of doing things that she doesn't have time to do for us because of her ability to use technology and to come up with solutions using technology to solve problems for us. And I think that's really just drawn on her background, working at Piedmont Tech and Newberry College, where she was really in a different line of work then. But she's got a love for recreation. She was a college softball player, an athlete, and just enjoys teaching youth in particular and just trying to create the best environment and opportunities for them to have fun and compete and to learn about these sports they've decided to play. I will tell you, since 2017, which that three days Jesse's been with us, our programs have, the presentation in our programs has doubled, it's more than doubled, actually. And so, you know, I think a lot of credit goes to her predecessors. And then I think Jesse's done an excellent job of sustaining the momentum that they started and taking it to another level. So I'm really pleased with her, proud for her. And if y'all don't mind joining me and giving her a round of applause. The next recognition, and this is more of a personal conflict, is her retirement. And it's for Miss Jackie Kennedy. And Jackie worked with us for eight years. This was a second career for her. She had a life of working and reached her retirement age while she was with us. She worked in the county assessor's office. And, you know, the county assessor's office is where property is valued. And, you know, in some cases, it's a little complicated in terms of how property is valued in South Carolina. You know, we don't make the rules. We just have to work within the rules. And Jesse, I'm sorry, Jackie had an important role to play in that. She handled legal residencies, and she handled customer servicing. You can imagine when folks come in related to property taxes, sometimes they're not in the best mood. I mean, sometimes they are. But she had a way of dealing with them well, getting to know them. You know, she did know them when they came in. When they left, she knew them very well. And just she did a really good job for us. Of course, we're going to miss her. But we want to congratulate her, I guess, in the extensive for her eight years of service. And y'all don't mind joining me and giving her a round of applause. I'm sure she gets this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, two great employees. I knew, I talked to Jesse, and she had almost 800 kids between baseball and softball signed up. So that's amazing. That's very outstanding. Next on the agenda, personal appearance, Mr. Mark Kaiser of Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District.
I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to come here just to give you, I'm one of the board members and all, give you a quick update. Last month, we hosted the annual legislative dinner. Representatives from the governor's offices, county representatives, mayors, and Newberry and prosperity came together to discuss local legislation. Thanks to the councilman Carl Sees for his participation and all. We have given out $4,000 scholarships to, are going to be giving four $1,000 scholarships out to students, anybody from the Newberry County. They can go to Newberry College, but they could go on Clemson, wherever. They just have to apply for it. We've got a Keep Newberry Beautiful is holding a Great American Cleanup beginning April 12th in the city of Newberry. Last week, we participated with the city for a cleanup in the West End. KNCB Supplies provided the supplies for the cleanup materials and had a lot of different people attending. They had picked up, I think, 25 bags from the streets and the parks. We're also working with the Newberry Chamber of Commerce to plan a Newberry Ag and Arts Tour Saturday, May the 10th. There are nine farms that are participating across the county to educate the community about farming. And local artisans are on hand to give demonstrations and show their wares. It's free to attend. Camp Conservation, we're planning our 24th Annual Camp, June 16th through the 20th. All are welcome to join us. We expect about 60 campers and have five full days of activities. And lastly, we're excited to announce our new mobile education lab. We received a $200,000 grant to promote gardens, pollinators across Newberry County. We will be out to the local schools, host community workshops, provide hands-on demonstration and visual aids to promote soil health, rain mitigation, pollinators, and our ecosystem. And if y'all, anybody has any questions, shoot them at me.
Did your camp conservation already fill up?
Uh, Chris, is it full yet?
Ten spots.
Do what?
About ten spots.
Ten spots left.
Ten spots left, Doc.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, it fills up every year. And some people that, that's just the way it goes.
I'll do an excellent job.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. We appreciate all your support and all.
Thank you for the update. We appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda is a resolution 01-25, designation of the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month within the county of Newberry. We all had that in our packets. Do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Councilman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number six, ordinance number 02042025, an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in Chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to establish regulations for the issuance of permits for the keeping of chickens on a non-commercial basis on residential properties in Newberry County as an accessory use. Mr. Shaker, if you'd please give a brief summary of this ordinance.
I'll be glad to. You know, this is something that we've discussed in council work sessions and at the planning commission level. Of course, it originated there in terms of a recommendation to council. And we've gone through the reading process. This is the final reading. We have public hearing, you know, at the last meeting. What this ordinance proposes to do is to address what we felt was an oversight in the current zoning ordinance, which was to allow owners of property that have residential zoning other than R2, because it's currently allowed in R2 to keep chickens, subject to a conditional use permit, where the chickens would be in accessory use. It would be limited to hens. They would have to be in enclosure as opposed to free range. And the enclosure would have to meet certain requirements. And that's really kind of how conditional use zoning works. There are varying setbacks based on the number of hens that are kept. So the limit on hens is 18, provided that you have enough room for a setback for that number of hens. If you don't, and you drop down to a lesser setback, then the number of hens is reduced. And we did a half dozen increments, so it can be as few, assume if you have hens, as few as six or less, seven to 12, or a dozen, or 13 to 18. And, you know, one thing I want to mention, too, because I know this was a concern that council had, is that we established a year period where there would not be a fee associated with us coming out and staking and verifying dimensions for the enclosure. Because, you know, anytime you're dealing with an accessory structure, which the enclosure for the chickens is treated like, kind of like if you had a detached garage or, you know, a pool, you know, where you had your swimming pool pump, like a pool house or something. We come out and we verify what the setbacks are and we stake it. And there's, you know, there's, we incur a cost doing that, you know. And so, you know, council has adopted a fee for that. But what this ordinance proposes for a one-year period, that fee would not be in effect. So the requirements are, but no fee. Of course, we'll work with property owners on, you know, existing, you know, enclosures and keeping the hens. The other thing I want to mention, too, is, you know, it's really difficult. You can imagine Newberry County is a big county, and you've got a lot of different types of property. And those properties are sized and shaped differently, geometrically speaking. It's not the easiest thing to come up with requirements that will apply in every situation in this county. Again, most of the county is zoned, I mean, the lion's share of the county is zoned R2. And there are no limits on the keeping of hens and roosters. There's not a limit on the number, and there's not a requirement for enclosures. And so this doesn't apply to those. But where we do have residentially, single-family residentially zoned properties where this applies, there are certain properties that are a challenge with these requirements. And that's where variance comes in. I think sometimes variances get a negative, it's like a negative connotation or a bad label, but there's a purpose behind those. And variances, when they're properly applied by our Board of Zoning Appeals, deals with situations where you have unusual or mitigating circumstances. And that's where the Board of Zoning Appeals works with the property owner to come up with a solution so that they can do the thing that they're proposing to do. And we relax some of the requirements and the ordinance to enable that. And there's notice provided, you know, and it's handled in a, you know, in a public hearing type of environment. So I just wanted to mention that because I know that's a concern. And that's just a function of just a one-size-fits-all approach just can't work 100%.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
All right. This is the third reading. Do I have a motion that this be third reading?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chairman Councilman Johnson, stuck in my head.
That's right.
Second by Vice Chairman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor?
All opposed.
It is unanimous. Mr. Reader? It is unanimous.
There's no voting on their speaking.
We just did. No, no.
Y'all did. We did.
We had the public comments on the second reading.
Because that was the hearing, public hearing.
Yeah, that was, the public hearing was the second reading. It was the last meeting.
So we're stuck with your decision? Is that right, Mr. Fulmer?
That is, we've, we've, we've already voted on this now. So if you've got any questions, please get with one of us or Mr. Shaker after the meeting, and we'll, we'll discuss it. That, that one's been voted on. Item number seven, ordinance number 02052025, an ordinance amending Section 152.04 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, Flood Damage Prevention, to clarify the date of the flood insurance study of the Federal Emergency Management Agency identifying areas of special flood hazard within Newberry County, South Carolina, and reference therein. This is the third reading. Anything changed, Mr. Shaker?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion? This be third reading?
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion, Councilman Sees, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Reader? It is unanimous. Item number eight, ordinance number 03012025, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the subdivision of a tract of land in five lots or more invoking application of the pending ordinance doctrine and protecting existed, existing vested rights as required by applicable law. Any changes on this one, Mr. Shaker?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion? This be second reading?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Curry. Any discussion?
I would just say, for those that are looking, we're not saying we're stopping this forever. We want to stop. We want to get the stakeholders at the table. We want to hear from the community. We want to get this right because we only got one shot to get it right. But our kids would have a lifetime to pay if we get it wrong. So I think we got to get this right. And this is just to, just to hold on a minute. Let's do it right from the start and not try to fix damage instead of getting it right in the first place.
This is not the stop button.
That's right.
This is the pause button.
Yes, sir.
We want to make sure that we get it the way that Newberry County wants it. So any other discussion?
Can hear your comments? I'm sorry. I was late. I don't know the procedure.
No, ma'am. There'll be a time for public comments at the end.
At the end? Okay.
All in favor? It is unanimous. All right. Number nine is appointments. Looks like we got the Board of Zoning Appeals for District Two?
That's me. Yes, Mr. Wayne Bowling has offered to run again or to serve again. So I present his name, his motion. name as a motion.
I gladly make that, uh, second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I think I heard aye.
Yeah.
It is unanimous. All right, the Hal Khan Memorial Library Board, District Two.
That's me again.
I'm still looking at you.
Yep. Ms. Melanie Beatonball-Hawkins has committed to serve on this board. Ms. Epting, there you go. Ms. Epting, appreciate that. Ms. Epting decided that she was unable to continue due to some personal reasons. She felt like she needed to step away, and Ms. Hawkins has offered her service on this board, so I present that as a motion.
Very good. I hear second, second by Vice Chairman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. I think we have one more appointment.
Yes, I have one more. Mr. Scott Kane decided to step down, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Ward Brazel for Ward and Sewer Authority Board.
You got a nomination for Ward and Sewer Authority Board, Mr. Ward.
Brazel.
Mr. Ward Brazel. Now we have a motion, we have a second. Second by Councilman Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, that brings us to public comments. If you have not signed in, please do so before you come speak. I suppose I ought to say that. Sorry, Andrew. All right, public comments. Mr. Chuck Fellows, if you don't mind coming, state your name and where you live.
Chuck Fellows, 61 Golf View Road, just off the 12th T. Been here for four years. All politics are local, and when a citizen can't get answers at the federal level or the state level, who do you call? The county council. Anyway, I have three concerns that I want to express: the economy, public safety, and education. On the economy, South Carolina has three major trading partners. They're Canada, Mexico, and China. Newberry County is a really big agricultural community. Newberry County exports a whole bunch of stuff, from turkeys to timber, to all over the world. We have major manufacturers here: Samsung, Komatsu, Dayton Rogers, McLean Power Systems, KS Wire, and more. Businesses that source and receive materials and equipment globally. All these companies employ folks from Newberry County, and by their presence here, they support all our local businesses. Tariffs are bad for business, and I base that on my 40 years of experience in the global economy. Education. Although the U.S. Department of Education provides only 10% to 15% of local school budgets, these funds are used to ensure the most disadvantaged in our county receive a fair and appropriate education. Dissolution of the Department of Education will put an end to those services our children receive. Finally, safety. Are you all familiar with the Savannah River site? Yeah, it's radioactive. And my concern is, there's 12,000 employees there. Half of those are federal, half are contract, and with the arbitrary removal of federal employees, I'm kind of concerned that the safety and containment of that radioactive material will be in jeopardy. I worked many years in the regulation of hazardous materials for a large corporation, and I know how dangerous that can be. Letting the bird flu run rampant is another problem, because it will literally kill chickens and jobs in this county. Our state is home to four automobile manufacturers: BMW, Volvo, Volkswagen, and Mercedes. These global concerns export finished vehicles and import parts and materials from the whole world, and they employ not only in Newberry, but a whole lot of people in the whole state. Tariffs, as Bill Ford said, will shut down the automobile industry in the United States.
All right, I think, I think you got two more minutes.
Two, two minutes. Two minutes.
Yeah. Anyway, I've communicated these to our state and federal representatives, and of course, they haven't been able to answer, but I just wanted to be sure that the county council was aware, and it appears you are. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Josh Bowles. Like I said, is that right? Mr. Josh Bowles, not here? All right. Ross McLeod?
Ross McLeod.
Ross McLeod?
I'm a little concerned about the zoning. I live at, my name's Ross McLeod. I live at 495 Wilson Landing Road, Prosperity. I moved there when I was 13 years old. I'm 79, been there 65 years. So I've been told that, it used to be ruled, but I've been told it's been changed to residential. So I guess we follow under new rules. I didn't even know. I worked a lot on the road. I wasn't always at home. I have chickens. Had them for quite some time. They are in enclosed pen, which has a top on it and four sides. They stay in the pen. I only have three of one rooster. I don't let any eggs get hatched. I just keep them in there for protection in case something does get in the pen. So what's going to happen with mine? I have had no complaints. Matter of fact, a neighbor lived right behind me, said she appreciates, she likes hearing that rooster crow.
We'll, we'll have to talk with Mr. Schacker and afterwards, and we'll just have to discuss.
Okay. That's all I got.
Vanessa Patrick?
Hey, I'm sorry, a little late to the game. I just found out about this a few minutes ago.
All right.
I just wanted to comment on number eight, just very quickly. I was able to look something up. So this is a temporary postponement? Like, do you have any idea what temporary is? Because I am a real estate agent and developer. I do very low-density development, which Katie, who's not there, but anyway, can attest to. And I can't stand mass grading and all that stuff. I save properties from that. So I just, I kind of need to know, because I have some, some projects going right now, how long this is expected to take, and...
It's 270 days.
Whew, Jesus. And what if we have something that's already underway, but maybe not submitted yet, like we already do an engineering?
If it's not submitted yet, then it's...
So the dead in the water, like we were in Lexington a couple of years ago?
If you've got, you know, the way the vested rights act reads, if there's a site development, a site-specific development plan that's already been approved by the Planning Commission, it can go forward.
Right, right.
So that would be like a preliminary plat?
So if you purchase the land, and you're doing engineering work, and spending money, and, you know, I just need to let people know.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going to be, okay, I mean, I just need to know, and I'm sorry again if I've taken everyone's time, but I wanted to hear that. And this is for the purpose of you're doing a big rezoning?
That's right. We're implementing, adopting new land development regulations and thoroughly evaluating the zoning ordinance and making adjustments where we need to make adjustments.
Okay, okay. Well, I won't take everyone's time. Is there a way I can volunteer? Katie knows me well, and I do a lot of business here, and I'm a county resident, sorry, 1956 Peak Road, Palm area. 50 acres.
And the process will go through the Planning Commission, so yeah, I'm sure you'll be welcome at those meetings.
Okay, because I do, just so everyone knows, I do large lots. I've done, I've done three in the last couple months in the county, and they're all like two to 12-acre lots and stuff. So I just need to be interviewed.
And that's an important point. So this would apply to subdivisions of five lots or more that are less than two acres in size.
Right. Now, is that a, all lots, or this is my next question, all lots less than two acres? Because...
Any lot less than two.
Any lot. So if I have four or five-acre lots in one little corner over here that's going to be an acre and a half, I'm dead? Or is it average?
It would trigger the moratorium subdivision. Absolutely.
If you got more questions about it, we'd be glad to get with you.
No, that's fine. I just, I...
Please come to the joint planning...
Before we got to 33.
Yeah, feel free to call in.
Or come to the joint planning commission meetings. I'm sure they would love your assistance.
I appreciate your attention.
Mr. Forrest Byrd.
My name's Forrest Byrd. I live on Wilson Landing Road, and I guess y'all all know me by now, pretty much. And I can't keep my mouth shut. I apologize. But, I mean, I like hearing Ross's roosters, too. It just makes me know that I'm in a country, I'm in a country, I'm in a rural county. I moved to a rural county to be out of town, be away from the city, be in a rural life, to have nature, wildlife, and creatures around me. I didn't move into a subdivision or a neighborhood to have neighborhood rules, to have everybody telling me what I could and couldn't do on my property, and to decide for me. I believe that we should all respect each other as neighbors, but I also think when it's your property, it's your property. When I was young, it used to be, that's his property, he does what he wants. My property, I do what I want. There's a little bit of a division. Now the world has changed. I know that, my dad was in the Navy. He was in World War II and the Korean War. I heard all the stories about a lot of his friends who didn't make it. I never met the ones who didn't make it. I'm not that old. A lot of them didn't make it. They were fighting for their home, they were fighting for their country, and they were fighting for the concept of liberty and freedom. And that's sort of everybody being free to do what they want to do as much as possible. There's a different concept that's been going on the last 20, 30, 40 years. And we've gone from individual liberty and people doing what they want, and everybody's sort of respecting it, and that's his property, let him do his thing, his property, he does his, to the socialist concept, and everybody gets to decide what you get to do. Everybody gets to group up and decide what you get to do. And the socialist thing has crept in in a lot of different areas, and we don't see it. And it is amazing to me at how much we don't see it, and in how many areas that it's in, and how strong it's getting. And I know that a lot of people, I know how a lot of people feel about this ordinance. A lot of people say, well, there's nothing I can do anyway, no need for me to show up. Nothing I can do, they won't listen. No need to even argue about it. I mean, and they're, I got school, I got church, I got this to do, I got that to do. It's not going to do any good anyway. And I can sort of sympathize with that approach. I guess I'm not bright enough to give up, but there is a point to us being out in the county, wanting to be in the county, wanting to be left alone. None of us has to be zoned residential. Actually, if you really look at the zoning rules, we should probably be RG, because some people have trailers, some people don't. We don't really fit the R2 zoning map anyway. But then we can't change, I'm, excuse me, but then we can't, I guess I said R.
I had to cut you off.
All right, go ahead.
I appreciate your comments, and I understand. Appreciate your comments. All right. Comments or requests from the administrator?
Yeah, I really don't have any, other than to say I appreciate y'all's time earlier during the 5:00 p.m. meeting to start the process of reviewing the budget. And I think you saw, and we went over the capital project fund, which has a number of projects that are underway, and I think you can see, kind of, you know, we talked a little bit about the status of those, so that's, that's pretty much what we're working on. And in line with, I guess, tonight's thing related to the moratorium and some of the work we're doing on the land development regs and the zoning ordinance, that process has started in terms of doing an evaluation for y'all, and we'll try to make good progress on that this spring while y'all are focused on budget, so that this summer, y'all can turn, when you're ready, can turn your attention to, you know, the provisions we would propose and get feedback on you, and then, you know, make sure we stay on point in terms of this nine-month period that we have to evaluate and make changes.
Very good. Comments or questions from council?
Mr. Fulmer? Thank you, thank you. Absolutely got a few comments to make. First off, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, making, making comments to us. We definitely want to hear from as many folks as possible, for sure, on all issues, not, not just a few, but everything. Also, would be remiss not to extend a huge thank you to our volunteers. I have come to do this at just about every council meeting, and I, and I want to continue doing that. Volunteers make up the backbone of our emergency services within Newberry County. And a huge thank you to what they do free of charge, taking time away from their jobs, away from their families, for nothing more than a desire to serve their fellow man. So thank you for everything that they do. As far as the ordinance, poultry ordinance that we had, as our administrator mentioned, there is options for variances. That is in there in order to try to make it as least impactful as possible on, on everyone, not just the owner, but neighbors as well. Because the way it currently sits, it is not an allowable use in those zoned areas. So it was an effort in order to try to allow and try to fix that. So certainly not perfect method, not perfect, but certainly have an option for a variance, and waiving the fee for 12 months gives everybody an option in order to hopefully come into compliance. So thank you, staff, for everything y'all have done with that, as well as the budget as well. Appreciate your work with that. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Councilman Johnson?
I will be brief, just to say thank you to our staff, county administrator, for an excellent presentation on the, on the capital portion of our budget. And again, Jeff, thank you for the constituent service. Had two things since our last meeting, and you were able to address both of those, and so it's, that's a blessing. It's a blessing when you pick up and call, and so I appreciate that. Appreciate everybody being here, and I do want people to know their voice is heard. I mean, we put the, we put the chicken thing off for about a year to go back and get it right. So voices are heard and appreciated, and I didn't mean anything earlier with this fine lady, just, this isn't really a back-and-forth scenario, but we're glad to talk to you offline. So I certainly didn't mean anything by that either, so. But it's a blessing to serve, it's an honor to serve, and I thank God for this opportunity.
Councilman Reader? We'll go to your spot.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff and the county administration for the work that Dave's doing on the foot, so forth. Every year, they do an excellent job, and I appreciate everything that they do, and I'm sure everybody else does as well. I'd also like to say condolences to the family of the young, the lady that the library renamed after. She passed this past weekend. She worked many years on the library floor, making sure that Newberry always had a public library. And I also wanted to say I wish I was there tonight. I had a difficulty having to go to the emergency room. If it wasn't for that, I would have been there tonight, but the medication that they put me on, makes me a little drowsy. And I'd like to thank all the people who came out tonight, watching their feed. Their opinion had significance, it didn't count. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reader, and take care of yourself. Councilman Smith?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and participating in your local government. It's always, we take all that into consideration when we make our decisions. Sometimes it's really tough decisions, but with all that in consideration. Also, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Kennedy for her retirement, wish her very best, and Ms. Long for her longevity. Also, I'd like, Mr. Fulmer's talked about, our first responders, like to thank those, all the volunteers. We had a, had a rough week this week with a storm coming in to protect us all with our best interests, so we want to thank those individuals also, too. And thank you, staff, for your hard work on the budget presentation. Appreciate it. Mr. Reader, hope you feel better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Scurry?
Good to be here all night.
Good to see y'all out tonight. This family here in New York, they be walking on, walking over y'all, but we're not doing that. We're here to listen at you, while we were complaining about your chickens, we're here to listen to you, take all night, we'll be here half the night with you. But we're going to try to solve that problem, one way or the other. May not be tonight, but it will get solved, I promise you that. You don't lack your confidence, take another one. We'll solve it. We go this back with you from day one to today. We're on your side, we're not on the county's side, we're on your public's side. Thank y'all for coming out.
Vice Chairman Sees?
Just like to thank everybody for coming out. Thank staff for doing a great job, putting the packages together for us to look over the budget. So we got a busy week next week with more talks, work sessions. Everybody's participating in the public comments and everything, letting us know how they feel because that's what we have to, you know, go by and make our decisions and sometimes we make those, had to make those tough decisions and we had a ordinance that didn't allow chickens, so now we got some things in place that allow it based on things. And if you need a variance, that's what the zoning Board of Appeals is for. So we encourage you to go there if you need a variance for some reason. So also, Leon and Stuart's comments about our first responders, they do a great, our volunteers do a great job for the county and they've been taxed this past six months with the hurricane, the storms that come through, the heavy rains and winds this past weekend, so they get worked hard 24/7. You know, they just don't know when they're getting called and they have to go to the regular jobs too, so we, our county couldn't do without them. So I just want to make sure we appreciate our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, fire service, and rescue squads for all the hard work they put in for the county to keep us safe. That's all. Thank you.
It's hard to follow up, these guys. But I do want to thank staff for putting together such a great presentation of the budget. And I want to thank everyone for coming out, speaking your voice. We don't always like what we have to do, but sometimes we have to do it. Some decisions aren't easy, but they have to be made, so it's all hopefully for the betterment of the county as a whole. That's, that's all we can do is the best we can. Thank y'all for coming out. All right, future meetings. Newberry County Finance Committee, March 24th at 5:00 p.m. has been canceled. Newberry County Budget Work Session, March 25th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Budget Work Session, whoa.
We, did we adjust that time?
We did, 4:00 p.m., didn't we? I didn't know my paper. All right, so Newberry County Budget Work Session, March 25th at 4:00 p.m. Newberry County Budget Work Session, March 26th at 4:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Work Session, April 2nd at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Meeting, April 2nd at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Reverend Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Reader? It is unanimous.